We're all set. Lake Cam is all set. So it's now later than it should be, but it is 6:37. So I'm going to open the Board of Selectmen meeting for April 2nd, 2019, 6:30. Lake Cam is taping. Is anyone else taping the meeting? No. First order of business is the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen, but I think since John's here, we can take you out of order, if that works. Is that any --
Sure.
He's posted for 6:45.
Is there -- oh, you're posted at 6:45. Gotcha. All right. So then let's go ahead and we will do Agenda Item Number One, which is a reorganization of the Board of Selectmen to review the various current appointments of the Board of Selectmen members and discuss the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen. So first of all, wanted to welcome our newest Selectman.
Hi. Thanks.
Welcome, Leah.
Very excited to be here.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a tough race.
It was a tough race.
Tough race, too.
But...
Came down the home stretch.
Yeah, exactly. So typically what we end up doing is we go through this list that we have, which is all of the responsibilities and roles of the board positions that we all hold, and kind of just go through them and determine, you know, who wants to do what. Clearly, there's actually two things that we had previously voted, Erin, to continue on as the Selectmen's representative, which would be the Police Station Building Committee and the Zoning Bylaw Advisory Committee. So those are kind of all set and taken care of. We've already done the Chairman, the Vice Chairman. So I think if we just kind of go down from the start, we can determine, you know, who wants to do what. So the first thing we have is the Director of Veteran Services. So, you know, John, you've been doing that.
Yeah. I do that because I see Will typically on Friday. Not that you can't come on Fridays, but typically he's here Fridays. So I wouldn't mind keeping that. And I'm just going to skip to the one with American Disability Act, which somewhat has to do, not with him, but he might have cases like that. So I wouldn't mind continuing Director of Veteran Services and do the American Disability Act also.
Okay.
Coordinator. But I don't think I volunteer for any others.
You don't want the DAM Commission?
The which one?
The DAM Committee?
Not a chance. Not a chance. Time must have gone to take it down.
All right. Leah, I don't know if you're interested at all. The Plymouth County Advisory Board is, they meet once a month in Plymouth. I've probably only gone to a handful of meetings. Anytime there's something that really kind of matters, I would say more so to our town.
Yep.
But it is something, if you're interested. Typically, they meet on Thursdays. I have a hard time getting there on Thursdays.
No, I can take that one.
Okay. That would be fantastic.
Mm-hmm.
And I can not have to do that one.
Been trying to get rid of that one.
I know. I'm like, I'm the representative and pretty much just vote against their budget every single time. It's a weighted vote, so it's an interesting place to be. We have not really appointed anybody to capital expenditures because we kind of just almost disbanded that committee because we just found it was redundant because the people on it really were the people making the decisions between the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen anyway. So we just haven't, we've left that position empty.
Okay.
The Economic Development Committee, I'm happy to go back on that. We really haven't met on that in a couple of years. I think, I don't know if it will ever meet. I was on it with John back in the day. So I'm happy to take that particular committee.
Okay.
In the event that we ever...
They're on hiatus right now.
Yeah. So they haven't really done anything, but I'm happy to see if we want to ever have a meeting on that again.
Okay.
Mitch, you can't get rid of all the committees that you don't like and the committees that don't...
I'm trying. I'm trying. This is my opportunity, right?
Yes.
I did, however, have a desire to become the parking clerk.
Really?
I did. That was one thing. So if you want EDC, I'm happy to be the parking clerk.
Okay.
I don't know what you might want.
No, that's fine. You can, you can do EDC.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay. But I want to make sure that you have some, you know, that are on there.
Yep.
So Emergency Planning Committee. John, what's your...
Yeah, no, I don't mind staying on that. I go to the meetings. I go to the meetings at the school, things like that. I mean, I don't have an attachment to any of them except the Energy Committee.
Okay.
So if anyone wants to chime in and take one, be my guest. I don't need to get off any unless someone wants to take the position. I'm easy.
Yeah. I mean, the only ones really...
I do want the highway barn gas cleanup, though.
There you go. You can clean up the highway barn and gas.
Well, I mean, I actually have, you know, a lot of environmental whatever experience.
Beautiful. Would you like the DAM Committee?
Um, you know, I wouldn't mind taking that one, too, honestly, because I do that.
I know. Even though I wrote the grant, that's fine. It doesn't matter.
I know, but I can run with the grant from there.
That would be perfect. Because a lot of times, I mean, that meets anyways during the day, which is...
Yeah, and I have a lot more flexibility to get to, you know.
Beautiful. That means I get the parking clerk?
Yes, you can have a parking clerk.
I just want the title. I don't know why or what it actually does.
What it does.
No idea. So, yeah, John, so you are on Energy Advisory and you want to stay there.
Yes, yes, I want to stay there.
I know you do usually go to Middleborough Gas and Electric. I don't know if that's something...
I read her agendas. If anyone's on for Middleborough, for Lake, I'll let go. Generally, it's, it's almost exclusively for Middleborough.
Regional FinCom, I want to stay on, if no one has a problem with that. Project Review Committee for 43D, Expedited Permitting, if that ever comes to the hospital.
Just for Lakeville Hospital, so we may never...
So if you're doing, oh, am I doing, I'm doing EDC. I don't know. Doesn't really matter.
Who's doing the economic development? You are, Mitch?
I'm going to do that.
Yeah.
To do that. The 43D may go with that?
Yeah, I'll do that. Okay. So then Budget School Department. So then what we kind of end up doing anyways is we kind of, we used to try to have liaisons between the Board of Selectmen members and certain departments where we thought maybe...
You did miss one, the DEP Subcommittee and the Maskey.
Oh, no, that's both Leah and Leah.
Leah and Leah.
Leah's all over the DEP.
Leah's jumping right in.
She gets to handle that one.
Lincoln and the Maskey.
Yeah. So, I mean, like, I kind of ended up being over at the School Department essentially because of the budget.
Yeah.
And it's the only real issue or reason why we've kind of had that in there.
Okay.
The BOS Representative for New Unions, I don't even know what that would ever do. There's only one potential new union, I think. Who knows if we'd ever have any?
Well, it was somewhat formed when, when all the other unions, once they get into the...
We shouldn't call it New Unions anymore.
Right, right. You probably don't, you probably don't need that.
Yeah, I don't even know what that...
You probably don't need it. It was the, the New Unions of...
That was Highway Live.
I, I, right.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
So Hospital Redevelopment, does that even need anything? I don't think so either. That's kind of covered by 43D and Economic Development Committee.
Yes.
IMAs, I mean, we all just deal with IMAs if those come to the table. I don't think that's something we need a point person on. Park Department, John, I guess you were...
That's, if I may, I'd say too, that's sort of what Lorraine do.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I don't think we, and the Rotary, forget that one. That was Pachico's, like, attempt to have a Rotary Committee.
I don't mind the park. I'm not necessarily...
I've worked with Scott Holmes and a bunch of those park people in the past. I mean, I don't mind.
You did a good job, believe.
Okay, perfect. There's Leah's job, too.
Yeah, I spent a lot of times there.
And I would just change the budget to FY '20, not FY '19.
I'd actually rather stay on the FY '19 budget. I'd like to be that point person.
Okay.
But you work in the new budget.
So that's fine. So the only other one that, you know, does anyone have any other things they'd want to move around potentially? Anything there? I know that, like, I ended up getting involved a little bit with the DAM stuff on emergency planning, but it was a little bit different. So again, that's a, sometimes I think those are meetings where it's more for all the board members to at least, not that meeting in particular, but just to be aware of what's going on from there.
I'll do them. It looks like we're going to sneak through another year.
For the DAM, yeah, I think we are right. So I think that's what we have. Anything else?
Wasn't, does Erin do department head meetings?
Oh, yeah.
Well, do we need a person there? I mean...
I would like to have a person at the department head meetings because I think it's important that, you know, and I typically, I mean, I figured I would be doing that now as the Chairman.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, wondered...
I think it'd be good if it tied into the Chairman part.
Right.
Well, I just was more, I mean, I've been to a couple when John couldn't represent the assessors.
Yep.
And I'm not exactly sure. It's a time for everyone to catch up, but is it like Selectmen-related, like, or do we want that, or do we want department heads to, you know, have a time away from Selectmen where they can, like, talk about stuff? I'm just curious if...
Yeah. My, my issue or my concern and what I, and why I want to go to these meetings and I want to see if we can move the one on the 11th, but I think is really to, and mainly, again, talking about what Lorraine's position is supposed to be, is there are things happening at all of the different department levels that really interact with each other, and otherwise, things are done in isolation. And I think that if you don't have the time by which everybody can sit down and really talk about what the certain items are that are happening or how things are moving along townwide, I think that we're going to miss a huge chunk of being effective as a town.
Okay. I mean, I, you know, I can see the reason why all the department heads, but I just don't know if we, you know, what the reason the Selectmen is there for.
If I may?
Yeah.
I think they like having a Selectman there that they can ask, you know, questions that don't have to be asked at an open meeting.
I just don't know if it was something that, you know, a report could be made or...
I have never heard a complaint they like to have.
Okay.
I know I do. But I feel everybody there.
Yeah. I mean, I had gone to a couple, and I don't know if either the Selectmen was in there. I don't remember if there was a Selectman or not, but when I saw it there, I figured I would just ask the question.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So, and I will talk about that with scheduling after that. So I think...
No, but I definitely think that falls under the Chair's, her view anyways, so...
All right. So that being said, Tracy, did you get all the, do you want me to list it down?
No, I haven't. There's no motion and you gotta do the expiration dates.
Yep. So that's what I was going to do right now, but I didn't want to have to rehash everything. If you had it all here, then I'm just going to, I will make a motion, I guess I will entertain a motion to approve the positions as we have just enumerated with the, I guess, we have different expiration dates on some of these items. So the expiration dates of April of 2020 for the Director of Veteran Services, Representative of Plymouth County Advisory Board, and the Americans with Disability Act Coordinator, and expiration dates of 7/31/19 for the Economic Development Committee, Emergency Planning Committee, Energy Advisory Committee, Middleborough Gas and Electric Commission Ad Hoc Member, Parking Clerk, Police Station Building Committee, Project Review for 43D, Regional FinCom, and the zoning, well, sorry, I didn't need to say the Police Station Building Committee, to expire 7/31/19, and the DEP Subcommittee's, both of them with no expiration date, as well as point persons designated as listed with no expiration date.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Thank you, everybody. Agenda Item Number Two has been skipped over. To meet with the Board of Health. Actually, you are correct. I have one more item, actually, under Number One. So, so the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen and the various current appointments. I think the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen, I think as we just kind of discussed, with the Chairman position looking to the department heads, and I think one of the things that we always want to make sure of is that our department heads know who to talk to or who's responsible for certain things. So I think in the event that we don't have necessarily a designated point person, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the board can only act by vote of the board. And so, you know, I don't know if there's any questions about kind of day-to-day operations as a member of the Board of Selectmen that, you know, maybe Leah, you might have or have any questions related to what our role really is with regard to the department heads because they are designated to be responsible for their departments.
Yeah.
And kind of, I think that's the meeting really that we kind of come back to for everybody to talk about.
I'm pretty good. I think I, and I will certainly, if there's something that I'm not sure of, or I will certainly ask a question of the Town Administrative Town Coordinator, Tracy, just to be sure I'm, you know, staying within all my, my guidelines.
Okay. Any, any other questions on that or anything, John?
No.
Good. All right. Excellent. So Agenda Item Number Two, we have skipped over because the Board of Health is going to talk about this next month with us. So finally, John, you're here. You've got a meeting. It's past 6:45.
I'm ready when you are.
All right. So we are going to discuss the vacancy on the Board of Assessors and the possible vote to fill the vacancies. So what I'm going to do is I have received a letter of resignation from Leah Fabian. Please accept the letter as her resignation from the Lakeville Board of Assessors. I'm going to read this out loud if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
"In the four years that I've been part of the board, I feel as though the board has done some great work in bringing consistency and efficiency to the assessor's office. But as you may know, I recently won the election for the position of Selectman, really."
I did.
"Which makes it necessary for me to vacate my seat from the Board of Assessors as our bylaws do not allow for the same person to sit on these two financial boards. I've enjoyed my time as part of the assessor's board and look forward to my opportunity to serve the townspeople of Lakeville in the position of Selectman. Thank you, Leah Fabian."
Aye.
So I have a question then, because this is a joint appointment with the Board of Assessors.
We don't have the quorum.
And if, I don't...
We don't have a quorum.
Actually, you can't do it.
But, but even if it is, so you can't actually vote as a member of the Board of Assessors right now unless she doesn't accept the resignation and John and I just vote. Then we have two boards with two quorums.
But you don't have a vacancy.
But then you don't have vacancy.
This is all semantics.
Somewhat ridiculous.
So what if, do you need to have both boards have quorums or can the Selectmen...
I've got it with me, I believe.
Because actually, we'd still be a majority of three. I don't know. Yeah.
I don't think so.
Does it say, does it say it has to be joint?
Yeah.
The remaining members of the board with a vacancy.
The, the, I guess my question is, did you discuss it at a meeting so that to, I'm not going to take what John's will is, but did you folks have a discussion? Usually we would go to your board and say, give us a written recommendation. We'd say yea and nay. Are you in a position to send us a letter where we say...
I can tell you that we did not formally vote.
You did not.
We did not formally vote, but the fact, by the mere fact that there were two people running for one seat, making the assumption, because Leah was running unopposed, that there would be a vacancy one way or the other. The assumption was that because whoever did not win the election would be the only person by default who has expressed interest indirectly, so to, so to speak, that that individual would, would make the most logical sense. So there's a consensus among the two remaining board members, but I can't tell you that we actually took a formal vote on it.
So I think, though, John, so Rita, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had this discussion or there was conversation with Michelle Randazzo that our bylaws may not actually be true or legal with regard to not allowing someone to sit on the same boards, and therefore, if we don't accept your resignation, you could open the meeting with the Board of Assessors and then we could have a joint vote. Is that...
Well, in the meantime, she did receive something from, from Greg Corbo that said the opposite.
That's okay. Okay.
So...
I don't mind accepting it with a letter from the, a follow-up letter from the Board of Assessors with their recommendation. I don't, I don't object to that.
Can I ask the question?
If, do the boards have to meet at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I was going to suggest if the Board of Selectmen want to take their vote now, we do have a meeting scheduled on Thursday this week.
What time's your meeting on Thursday?
Uh...
Five.
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 Do I just post a meeting with the Board of Selectmen on Thursday then? So if we post it at your place, then we can just go and just, if you give us a recommendation, you have it then. You guys can vote first and then we can vote.
It's no party at all.
Today. Oh, today's Tuesday. Forgot it's Tuesday. It was Monday.
Oh.
Well, this is a conundrum. I guess then we just need to post a meeting. I mean, if you guys want to do something, let us know on Friday and see if that's something where you can post a meeting and we can see if we can set something up, because as long as there's two of us there...
It's fine by me.
Yeah.
I mean, you're up early, I'm up early, you know, someone can roll in early.
Dunkin' Donuts, 5:30 a.m. meeting.
I don't want to interrupt his Dunkin' Donuts meetings.
If need be, I can be there 5:30.
I get my head chopped off.
So why don't we coordinate a time for Friday, which I think as long as, if you...
6:30 at Dunkin' Donuts.
Pushing for early, John, huh?
Do you want to do...
What my run?
I don't care. I don't care.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the board would like to, like to do.
But we have to check with Jonathan Pink to see when he will be available.
He's usually flexible, though, so...
Yeah, John's pretty flexible, but...
So if he might be able to get back to us by, you know, whatever time tomorrow, we can decide if we're meeting then or not.
Let me ask a que, I mean, I'm not an expert in this, but are there provisions for waiving the 48-hour notice?
This is an emergency.
Not for this.
Okay. Yeah, I, we, I will...
Was John going to be here?
Can John come back?
We know he's not available.
Is he available tonight? And we could just push this off to see if he can come back?
I mentioned this to him, so, you know...
Do you want to call?
I can, I can give John a call and see where he is right about now.
I mean, we have a whole 18 other items on the agenda.
Okay. I'm not going to close our meeting since...
Well, you didn't open it.
Since we didn't, since we didn't open it, because I don't have to open it because you've accepted, we as, well...
We haven't accepted it yet.
They haven't accepted it, so...
I'm debating whether we want to now. No, I think we have to.
Well, you might as well, because it'll make everything else go a lot easier.
Yeah, exactly. So I will make a motion that we accept Leah's letter of resignation from the Board of Assessors.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. So if you can get him here by the time we're...
I'll let you know.
Ready?
If John wants to schedule something Friday morning.
Then we can talk about the vehicle to let John come back.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Excellent. Agenda Item Number Four, this is a vote to schedule the special town meeting on June 3rd, 2019 at 6:30 p.m. So typically, we schedule the special a half an hour before the annual town meeting, and we keep the warrant open for one to two weeks. We have a couple items that we know we're going to probably have in the special town meeting warrant, which would be one, prior year unpaid bill, fiscal year 19, end of year transfers, and the zoning bylaw amendments regarding marijuana.
We never do a good job of the unpaid bills, so it seems somewhat premature to have it on there.
There's only one.
Because...
We put the article on, just the wording.
Put the article on, and then we don't find the bills until August. That's my point.
Every time, it's the same way for every town, John.
Fine.
Because June 30th, people have 30 days to send the bills, so even by town meeting, bills are still coming in.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to schedule a special town meeting at 6:30 p.m. at the Aponequid High School Auditorium on Monday, June 3rd, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. and to open the warrant.
I'll second that.
I entertain that motion, so.
So moved.
Leah moved it. John seconded it.
John seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I will entertain the motion to close the warrant on Monday, April 18th, 2019, at 5:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just bring up the article, the amendment?
Sure.
You probably need more time to look at it, but one of the items under Number Five, Katie Loftman wasn't sure about taking out the provisional license by the CCC, where that was the cap.
Yeah, we had talked about that as a group, but I think that we, so how do we want to handle that change? I mean, is this really the...
Yeah, just to schedule a meeting and for the planning board to hold it here.
Has this gone to the planning board?
No. This is going to be attached to the letter.
And when's that being sent out?
As soon as I had gotten the amendment, just letting the ZBA and the planning board know about it. But I don't know if waiting until April 22nd, because we have to do legal ads for the annual town meeting if you want to schedule a special meeting just to go over the...
Well, we had already discussed this. I mean, John, my recollection was very clear that we said we didn't want to have the provisional certificate of registration because it was holding it up.
Right, right. I mean...
Did you think anything different from that meeting?
Right. So we aren't going to have any more meetings on.
With the whole, you know, the wording, I've sent it to Nate, too, that what she's proposing is everything, as we had discussed.
Well, there will always be, there's always change in laws. There's always law changes, the numbers change. So you put down what's current at the particular time, just the snapshot of the picture at that particular time.
I mean, I read through this and I didn't have any, this is what she had.
Okay.
We had asked her.
And if the numbers change between now and the town meeting, it doesn't make any difference if you change them to be exact, in my mind.
What, the CMR references? I mean, I don't think that was...
If they change between the other items.
Right. No, right. It's everything else. I mean, everything that's on here, from what I recall of that meeting that we had specifically to marijuana zoning, is contained within this bylaw. Legal counsel looked at it and has sent it to us. I don't have any further revisions to it.
It's what they did do on Nature's Remedy. The other possibility is that the special permit doesn't become effective until they get the license from the CCC, so they can at least issue.
No, it's going to become effective at the town meeting.
Oh, no, the bylaw will.
Yeah.
But it's just when they'll issue the special permit contingent upon them getting, that's what they did with Nature's Remedy.
Well, that was within their, I mean, once this goes to them, they have an opportunity to take a look at it. And if they have any questions, then that's when we can have that conversation, if they felt that it wasn't within their, I think, their timeline or how they wanted it done.
Yeah, as long as you...
Yeah, no, I read through it and I had no problem.
Right. I read through it.
Agenda Item Number Five, I guess I'm going to hold on that just in case Jonathan Pink comes back. But it really, or Jonathan Pink comes, so that John Oliveri is here, too, but it really, you know, I kind of like to know what the assessors think with regard to transferring the unmarked vehicle to the Board of Assessors in lieu of the insurance recovery on...
That's what they used to get. They used to get hand downs from the police.
Yeah. I think as long as they're fine with it, I don't think there's an issue with it, but I'm happy to just kind of hold off just to see if they come back.
No, Noam didn't care one way or another. I mean, not that he run, he doesn't run the Board of Assessors, but he didn't care one way or another.
So let's skip over that just to see if we have the Board of Assessors coming back.
No, you can hold it.
And then we can stop doing the...
We're not getting rid of the, the police car.
All right. Agenda Item Number Six, this is review and vote to sign a host community agreement with Monroe Associates LLC. So this has come back to us. This is our template for the adult-use marijuana facility, recreational only, which has been adjusted, sent to Monroe Associates through town council, and they have come back and accepted our terms. So any, well, first I'll entertain a motion to vote to sign the community host agreement with Monroe Associates LLC.
I make that motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this? Need clarification? No? Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda Item Number Seven, this is review and vote to sign the host community agreement with Twisted Growers LLC. This also went through town council. This is for a cultivation facility, and they have agreed to our terms of the template on the HCA. So I will entertain a motion to approve or to vote to sign the host community agreement with Twisted Growers LLC.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
No. The only thing is, we just need to change out a couple of names on the...
I did today. All right. Perfect. All those in favor? Aye. Agenda Item Number Eight, this is review the proposal from ABC Disposal Service to renew the agreement for fiscal year 20. So we had a vote at town meeting in April 2018, which would authorize us to enter into a contract for a period in excess of three years with ABC Disposal. We kind of went back and forth with ABC over the past couple years since we changed to them, and we had a one-year contract, I believe, was the last year that they gave us a one-year contract. So this would be a new agreement for... So this would be a new agreement for one year, which would go from seventy-eight fifty per ton to eighty-two fifty per ton with an increase of approximately two thousand dollars. So we put this out for a quote from Waste Management.
Last year, I did. I'm waiting to hear back. She wrote me a letter. I'm waiting to hear back.
So I think we probably should hold this just to see what happens with the quote on it. I don't see any need to move forward on it.
Well, the good news was, last year, they weren't going to be able to open their facility in Rochester. Now they're saying they will be able to open it in late May, so.
Okay.
But we still should wait for Waste Management.
I agree.
I mean, you did a quote with them, right? Or you just talked to them. I mean, did you send them a quote and say?
No, she had written a letter, and I followed up and I'm waiting.
So why don't we, if you want to send another letter and just say that we would like a response prior to our meeting, that's going to be held on April twenty-fifth? Otherwise, we will just put this back on the agenda and you can vote on it then.
Can I just, one question? So the contract's one year. Is there a certain amount of time by which we have to notify them if we don't want to renew?
June thirtieth.
Well, not like three months in advance or six months. Sometimes like commercial, individual, like businesses, it's almost like six months notice.
Yeah, it was kind of a weird changeover from the three years where we had a very good rate over to the issue with the China Sword Policy coming in and changing the contract essentially everywhere from three to one, so they kind of changed it at that point.
So they probably got rid of that.
We pretty much have the one-pager, which is serving as the contract right now.
Okay.
So it's kind of not an issue.
The town council said if we held them to that rate, we'd spend more in litigation than we would.
In the three years, so we got out of that one.
Okay.
Gotcha. Okay, agenda item number nine, let's schedule the budget meetings and follow-ups. I wanted to make sure we had the full new board, so we could discuss when we were going to have some meetings for the department budgets and capital requests. We haven't discussed really the overall, I do want to wait, I don't know when this will be, for the house numbers to come in related to the regional transportation reimbursement for the regional school system, because once that budget moves through the state process, that's really the biggest moving part, that we don't know if we will end up getting additional funds coming from the state level down to alleviate the increase that's being requested by the schools.
Okay.
I do have a regional FinCom meeting sometime. I haven't received a notification as to when it is. I don't think we even have it on the schedule, so.
No, I don't.
It might be April eleventh, possibly. But I think that hopefully, if we start scheduling things maybe after the fifteenth, maybe the week of the twenty-second, I would think that that might be a good opportunity to have some items move forward.
Okay.
And the Finance Committee would be there.
Yeah, exactly, so we could kind of talk about.
Select another Finance Committee.
Yeah, right, and I think that we could do it all in one meeting, but worst-case scenario, we could hold a second meeting afterwards, but if we could do April twenty-third, does that work? For people, it's a Tuesday?
Yep.
And we can check with the FinCom?
Okay.
The school is the biggest. The school is the biggest part of it, obviously, being sixty-plus percent. Do you, do you think you'll know where they stand, or is it the state transportation numbers is the only missing piece as far as you're concerned?
They had to vote their budget by March thirty-first. They can't vote it higher after. They can vote it lower. So that budget's been kind of set in stone now. So in terms of their maximum, and their maximum is that seven hundred and thirty thousand.
Right, they set it at what they submitted to.
Correct, yeah, so that maximum increase is at seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars or whatnot to the Town of Lakeville.
That's a pretty good deal. I mean, why would you vote that?
So I think what I'd like to do is if we can wait, there's two big items that I think we've got out there, which would be the forty S money, which right now, the budget is not funded at the state level for another hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that it should be funded to.
Yep.
And then also, if the regional transportation comes in a little bit higher, typically, Chapter Seventy might go up another thirty, forty thousand dollars, nothing significant, but at least if regional transportation goes up another hundred or hundred fifty, something like that, you know, at least would help to alleviate that chunk of it, so.
Right, the forty S, I have to assume we always get it. I would think that Mike Brodick, who's the head of Ways and Means and Budgets, was our rep, I would think that he certainly would make sure that we get that. So the only missing item is transportation, and how late did that number come last year?
It came after July. I mean, it was after the budget was set.
Right, so you're not going to get either one of those in the forty S you're going to get.
No, but we will have an increase. Typically, what happens is it started to increase anyways from the governor's budget to the House, and then when it went to the Senate, they had another increase. The final, in conference committee, came out with a much larger increase, so we weren't counting on the much larger increase, but I think at least knowing that we have a trend that's going up, we can adjust the assessment for where we are at that moment.
Did they increase the school student reimbursement by twenty-five or fifty dollars?
No, not yet, but that's happened one year as well.
Right, which we would expect they could do that.
The House wants a hundred dollars per student.
Right, so I would think it's going to settle at fifty. And the transportation, you can assume that you're going to get, did they flatline it from last year's?
Transportation, it actually went down in theory because of the, after the budget was set and the July kind of supplement that happened where transportation reimbursement went up, so it looks like it went down, but it really didn't go down.
We should pick that number that they got last year, and that's the number that we would, we would agree to. I mean, you're not going to have either one of those numbers.
No, but.
Between now and when we need to get them.
We will have another iteration to at least see where the House is taking it, and that's the piece that I want to see where it's going, and that's why I think if we have the meeting on the twenty-third. The other item is that Freetown would like to meet with us as well. I will call George Grunwald, who just got elected. At some point, I will give him a call back and we can schedule a meeting with them too, so we can kind of go through the budget items as it relates to the schools. I think that what we want to make sure we do is we have a couple of different position changes that are in the budget, that are a little bit different than what they were in the past. We have actually, one and a half new positions in the budget, one in the treasure collector's office, and the half position is in the COA. I don't believe there were any other positions that were increased in the budget itself for this year.
Part-time custodian too.
In, that's in the highway? No, that's a.
Facilities.
Facilities, okay, so part-time custodian too, okay. So I know those are the increases, and then a lot of them are all contractual obligations or other requested increases, so. I think, you know, what we typically do is kind of look at where we are in the budget summary, which right now are about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit with the adjustments for health insurance, pension, and so we're trying to close that gap.
Okay. But I'm not confident about the forty S money this year, John, because they went into the.
The state is rolling the money. I would think Mike Brodick.
But they're looking for next year that the revenue is going to be down.
If they take away forty S money, they're taking away forty R money, basically.
So let's plan on that meeting. We'll have that conversation, and we'll just do budget that night, along with capital. So, agenda item number ten, this is an update on the town administrator search. So the interviews for the town administrator position are tentatively scheduled for April twelfth. We have the names of the four finalists. We have Adam Wilson, James McGrail, Lisa Green, and Maureen Candido. So this is the point in time where I have to disclose that I have a close friend relationship with Maureen Candido. So as we kind of move through the town administrator search, I'm making that disclosure to you guys as a board so that you are aware of that, and I will be objective in my evaluation of the candidates as they come forward. The questions are going to be given to us by Bernie Lynch. The scheduled interviews, I think he's scheduling them now, starting maybe around ten AM on April twelfth. So we will have the opportunity to review the packets of all of your qualifications, I think, before that meeting, and we will start with those interviews, and then we'll have a conversation about the candidates after the interviews are concluded.
Okay. Is the twelfth confirmed now?
Yes, I believe so.
I mean, for you.
Oh, for me, yeah.
You're okay.
I will be actually in Massachusetts.
Okay. And Bernie did email me today. He should be forwarding me the questions and give them the next few days.
Okay, great.
And we talked about maybe starting, he sent me the scheduled times. He was going to start at ten-thirty, but give the board a half an hour to speak with Bernie, discuss the questions, decide who wants to ask. Is that okay?
That works for me, yep.
When will I have the resumes? You have them? I can get them tomorrow?
I will be getting, forwarding to them, to you.
You what?
I will be getting them to you before tomorrow. By tomorrow, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
She's going down, so she can work at her desk.
Yeah, by tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right, agenda item number eleven, this is a vote to amend Section fourteen, the employee benefits in the wage and personnel handbook, to add Section M for the police lieutenant and Section N for the deputy fire chief. So this is an amendment that will clarify the benefits for the police lieutenants and the deputy fire chief. This is a ratification of the board's vote that was taken on March twenty-fifth in executive session. So I will make a motion to amend the personnel handbook, Section fourteen, employee benefits, and Section M for the police lieutenant and Section N for the deputy fire chief. I made it.
She made the motion.
I'll second that.
I figured that two of us are going to be voting on this to ratify it.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just, is this exactly the same as what we did in executive session?
Yes.
No changes?
Nope. All right, all those in favor? Aye.
And I'm going to abstain.
All right.
All right. I mean, I've read this, but I'd rather not make that.
Agenda item number twelve, discussing both the reclassification of the animal control officer position effective July first, two thousand eighteen. So we had discussed this at the budget meeting held with the Finance Committee on March fifth. The new position will be an exempt position. It's not eligible for on-call stipends for weekend and weeknight coverage. The increase will be funded by reducing the budget line item for the on-call stipends for the assistant animal control officers. We have a copy of the wage scale, which is removing the position from grade E, and it's adding the position to grade J. So I will entertain a motion to reclassify the position of the animal control officer from grade E to J with an annual salary of seventy thousand dollars effective July first, two thousand eighteen.
I'll make that motion.
I know you want to discuss it, so.
I have lots of questions. I'll second.
All right, so discussion.
Yeah, I thought it was just correcting the line item, because no one seemed to know what he was actually making. But to make him an exempt position says he doesn't have to come back for callbacks, as he does now. He gets the callback money because he comes back for callbacks. This says he doesn't have to come back now. So, and I don't know that I want to start.
He will.
David's going to, no, don't get me, he will. He doesn't have to come back. It's an exempt position. And, and when you go look for a new dog officer, because David will be retiring, I'm not so sure that this is the right number that we want to stop people on. We went and did a salary survey. I'm not talking about changing his rate of pay at all. The gross pay. But it was a move to change his pay increasingly from what it was back a couple of years ago. People looked at what other towns paid, found out we weren't going to move that money. At least that's what happened at that point in time. That was only a couple of years ago. I certainly would ask that you do a salary survey before you change this to an exempt position with no mandatory callback.
Do we have, is that in the job description?
He's already exempt.
Yeah, so he's already in exempt position anyways, so there's no change to the job description, right?
No.
Because we're just moving.
He had to come back. That's how he made his money. He doesn't have to come back.
Because the stipends are included essentially now.
So I'm looking at the next dog officer, not what David does today. Says you hire a dog officer at seventy thousand dollars, which is fifteen thousand dollars more than you hire a police officer and a fire officer, and they don't have to come back.
So you're concerned that the next person.
Right, I'm not, David's David. I'm not interested in changing what he does.
You don't have to hire the next one at the same salary.
And the salary, usually when we do that, sometimes you do a salary survey, and I'd want to do those ten towns that we agree upon.
Can I ask a question? Do we have to hire the next person at?
We do not, no.
The same salary?
Nope. No, so that's, you know, when we were, when we would go out to hire a new person, that would be the point at which we would set the salary scale for the person that you were looking to hire.
I've never seen it be less than what is posted on that schedule.
Well, I think that the position would be going out to determine what the range happens to be. I mean, a lot of these things too are going to be clarifications because of this wage scale. For example, as you kind of look at what we did in the grade A fifth step, the reason why that had such a large jump was really related to the search for the library director. And when that happened in the pay scale, instead of making a position that had an annual salary to appointment, it ended up getting shoved into a wage scale that doesn't make any sense with a giant jump from step four to five to accommodate the need to hire somebody with a master's degree and at a higher level of pay, because otherwise, we went out the first time, we couldn't attract anybody with the salary that was listed in it. So in order to avoid trying to shove positions into a wage scale that don't necessarily relate to I guess I would say the skills or the qualifications or the experience related to that position, this is pulling out that particular position to a different grade because mainly what he had been getting with the salaries plus all the stipend positions was an average of over seventy-two thousand dollars. So, that's what this is. But then again, when we go off to advertise for a new position in this case, that would be when we would be able to set the salary ranges to that person coming in. We did actually go down, if you recall, on the superintendent of streets. That was a reduction in the pay that has been in this wage scale, because when we went out to search for that individual, when Franklin was appointed to the position, it went from a different position where we had Jeremy, who was getting paid more, and that was a negotiated piece of essentially the employment contract with Franklin, so.
I'm just talking dog officer. I mean, you should do a salary survey so you can set an appropriate level. I'm not interested in changing David's numbers.
Right, I would say for the new person, I would have no problem with that.
I bet we'll never do it. That's okay, that's my opinion.
All right, so I'm going to bring us to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I guess we have no votes.
I honestly feel uncomfortable making this vote because I don't know that I've had enough time to make an educated vote.
So we can table this then, since we had nothing going on?
It doesn't change David's pay at all. It just keeps it the same, same as it has been.
I mean, I don't want to hold up the budget process either, but I just don't really want to say yes or no.
Well, the number's not going to change.
Yeah, so we might have that happen on the next two or three agenda items too, but I do see that the Board of Assessors is back.
Yeah.
So, you're back? You've opened a meeting, I assume?
Our meeting is open.
Oh, it's still, it's open, excellent. So let's go back to agenda item number three, and then we'll jump to agenda item five, because we skipped over that. That's the vehicle. And what?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, the insurance recovery on the vehicle. So back to agenda item number three. I guess we are looking to appoint, so we accepted Leah's resignation from the Board of Assessors, and now we are looking to talk about making a motion to elect a member to fill the vacancy on the Board of Assessors. on the board of assessors.
I'm only getting up because Jose will tell me to get up, so he can hear me. Would you like me to make a motion?
Sure.
I'm making the motion that we appoint Erin Burke, who ran for board of assessors in this past election yesterday to fill the vacancy for the remainder of Leah's term, which actually wouldn't be for the remainder of her term till the next election, correct?
Correct.
So I will make that motion. Someone wants to second it?
I will second that motion.
Okay.
Am I running this, or is she running this?
It's kind of a joint bizarre meeting.
You can run it. You're the chairman of the board of selectmen. You can call the vote.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Agenda item number five, just to come back to that, is to discuss the insurance recovery for the assessors' vehicle. So we have the report from credit insurance that there's an offer of three thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars to compensate for the destruction of the Ford Focus. There is a, I guess the police chief is willing to transfer a unmarked Ford Taurus, so the mileage of eighty-six thousand oh oh six, to the board of assessors. Is that anything that you guys have discussed?
We have not discussed it at a meeting at this point, although I would personally defer to the board of selectmen to make that decision. We would just ask that the vehicle is white and has the board of assessors, town of Lakeville, emblem on both doors.
We could do that with the three thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and paint it.
Paint it.
Spray paint, you could save some money.
So, John, I know that you said that you would, you talked to Frank about it.
Frank actually had offered it. He knew the car had been totaled, and just offered. He said it's a perfectly good vehicle.
All right.
And they would be getting rid of it, so. And typically, back before the Focus, that's where the cars generally came from, was X.
Yeah, the mileage that is put on that vehicle is extremely low. I'm not gonna quote it off the top of my head, but however old that vehicle is.
Less than three thousand miles a year.
Yeah.
Oh, significantly less than three thousand miles a year.
Like seventeen hundred.
Probably more in that range.
Not, do we? It's not really a vote. It's just happening internally.
Well, I wanted direction from the board, what you wanted to do.
I do think that, we're kind of, you know, giggling, but I think that painting it white makes it much more neutral.
It's like gray. It's an unmarked process, so it's like gray now.
Okay, but just definitely that it would have, you know, the assessors written on it.
Oh, I think they should put that on.
Yeah, so we can just make sure that gets done, but.
All right, so can I ask John about, was Frank going to turn that, was he?
He was waiting.
Wasn't that not on this year?
No.
Replacement schedule?
No, it was not one of the vehicles he was turning in. No.
All right, so I will make a motion that we move the unmarked Ford Taurus to the assessors for the use of the assessing vehicle to be painted with the assessors' logo.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number thirteen. Thank you. Agenda item number thirteen, this is a discuss and a vote on the reclassification of the council on aging director position effective July first, two thousand eighteen. Before we get into this position, the next position, and the, I guess we have a number of these different positions. Well, I'm gonna take them each, and we'll just see where it goes. So this is a reclassification of the council on aging director position discussed at the budget meeting held with the finance committee on March eighteenth. We have a copy of Kelly's request to have her position reclassified from grade C, step three, to grade A, step three, a copy of the wage analysis of similar-sized communities in the fiscal year twenty-eight wage scale. So I will make the motion to reclassify the position of the council on aging director from grade C to grade blank with an annual salary of blank. We had a request on here, right?
Right, but I think that we, you and I had talked about grade B. Not grade A.
The request is to go to grade A, step three. And grade A, step three would be moving to fifty-nine thousand ten dollars in this, with a similar-sized communities that she has provided that assessment for. So let's put this in here so that we can have discussion on it. So it's grade C to grade A with an annual salary of fifty-three thousand, oh, sorry, whatever that said. Fifty-nine thousand ten dollars effective July first, two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah, it does say that. It should be two thousand and nineteen. Yeah.
Yeah.
This, the motion says eighteen. Yeah, all the motions should be eighteen, but that one, just let's handle that anyways. So John, I made that motion. I don't know if you want to second it for discussion.
I'll second that.
All right, so let's discuss.
So why would we be skipping B? I guess that's my question.
So B is, we have nothing going on in B right now?
Mm-hmm.
I think that, you know, the request came in to move to A. If you think that you'd rather move it to B, there's certainly room for that.
And I think you wanted to have all the department heads down in the bottom section? That was the other?
Down in the other annual salary appointments?
With superintendent of streets, the building commissioner, animal control officer, they're all department heads.
But so is the library director.
Right.
So, you know, in grade A.
And you were gonna talk about that later, moving her. It wasn't on the agenda for tonight, but you felt that.
Yeah, so let's, let's just talk about this. In terms of, she's provided us with a
Some comparisons.
Wage comparison, other communities. She's been doing what I think to be a great job. What do you guys think in terms of the request and where you think it would sit?
The, is the intent, because I wasn't in, when I say discussion with the early numbers, I don't know what the early numbers were, but I'd see the fifty-nine ten. That's clear to me.
Yeah.
So is the intent to make that July one prior to a one and three-quarter, a three percent bump, wherever she, wherever she is in that scale? I don't know where she is in that scale.
This is the update, so this is the wage scale effective July first, twenty nineteen.
That's already with it, the rates.
When she then get three percent on top of that?
No, that would be.
Then I'd be all right with this number.
Because she'd only be getting the one and three-quarters anyways if she moves.
Yes, I want to make sure that it's not a number that then gets bumped when we do our wages July one.
Yep.
I, I haven't seen the job description or the requirements, but I still feel that I know enough on this that, you know, I can be making a judgment, but what are the requirements, like basic requirements? Because, you know, for like library people, I mean, I know that's a master's, you know, definitely a master's degree. Town coordinator, obviously, you know, I mean, these are all the folks that seem to be in the A. So how do the requirements of the COA director compare to these other people that are in the A?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's different, they're all very different in terms of responsibilities, who and what they're responsible for. So I think, you know, from my perspective of trying to compare, you know, whether it happens to be minimum qualifications of educational requirements versus supervisory capabilities and qualifications, number of employees, you know, who are kind of working under them. They're all very, very different. Again, the issue we always have is trying to stick people into a scale.
Right.
That therefore doesn't necessarily match up with anything, because it just so happens to be that we're looking to get to a comparable number for some of these department heads. And we end up in these kind of positions where they don't really fit into
Right.
these grades. So I guess the question could be, if we wanted to amend the motion, I guess that's what we got to from the beginning, Rita, was, you know, if we created a grade K that was at, say, fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that was effective July first, two thousand and nineteen. That would then not rise on this level of the wage scale, because it would be a standalone, independent value for that position.
Yeah. I mean, I have spent some time there, and I just hear from the folks who go there, who, you know, that they're very happy. They say that, you know, under Kelly's direction, things have gotten really great. So that kind of speaks for itself. It's just, you know, I always get leery about making too many categories too, you know, sometimes you're F-G-H-I-J-K. I've got the whole alphabet there, so.
We have twenty-six letters.
Yeah, that's true.
You can start doubling them up.
Gonna find it hard to go beyond the A going that way.
Yeah. Yeah, John, what do you think about, you know, if this was moved out of a grade A off the wage scale again and into a box down below? I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I'm not disagreeing with that. It's very difficult to put the bottom, as you said a minute ago, that it's very difficult to put them in the box where they are. I think we have the comparatives. I don't have a problem with that number, picking that number, as long as we don't bump it immediately.
So do you want to?
I don't mind the way that it is right now.
And leaving it in grade A?
Grade A.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't mind the way that it is now.
So, yeah, and the question would be then, again, when we look at the grade A, when you move, you know, two years down the road, all of a sudden, you've got a very large bump. That's the only issue with grade A?
Right.
Versus if you pull it out, then you're looking at a one and three-quarters until they hit five years, and then they get there three percent.
Right, but they would, they would get that in, let me back up. When next year comes, not this July one or June thirty.
Followed.
And let's say the person was gonna get three percent.
Mm-hmm.
Will we change in the grades? No.
You mean for Kelly's position?
Yeah, off of the library director who's in A also, but picking Kelly's position.
Yep.
She's at fifty-nine thousand, say, and she gets three percent.
But she hasn't been here for five years. Right, yeah.
And so do we go back and change the grades? Not, not really.
Well, no, I mean, the issue is, when you look at this, again, because A was created specifically for the library director to meet that, so you look and you see this giant eight-thousand-dollar bump. That's a lot more than three percent when you get there. So if you wanted to create K at fifty-nine thousand, then K gets one point seven-five, one point seven-five, and then three, and then three, and then three.
The contract around two thousand twenty is the last year of the three. You've got to renegotiate another three.
Right, no, no, but it probably would still always have a delta difference once she gets her her five years in, if you will.
Right, but it wouldn't be a step and a level. You know what I mean? It would just be taken out because there's no additional steps.
What would you, I don't mind the way it is. What would you like to see?
I actually wouldn't mind doing it as K.
That's okay.
So I'm gonna amend.
H-I-J-K.
The motion that we're discussing.
So we're gonna go with a K.
So I'm amending the motion to change the motion from step A, or grade A, step three, to a new grade K with an annual salary of fifty-one thousand. Can I get a second on my amended motion?
I second that.
Do we have to vote on the amended motion? We have to vote to vote on the amended motion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have an amended motion. Let's vote on the amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There. I got that one right. Are you proud of me?
You don't need to be that precise. It's practice for telling you, right?
There you go. That's too much. All right, agenda item number fourteen. This is review and vote on the job description and classification of the human resources director position effective July first, two thousand eighteen. This, yes.
We are lost in two thousand and eighteen.
And it's because between, what's FY twenty and we're in FY nineteen, so.
Just assume if I say eighteen, it's probably nineteen, unless it's in a number. Okay, so this is the HR director position that we decided to create as we had that conversation at the budget meeting held with the finance committee on March fifth. There is a red line job description that has been prepared regarding this position, the human resources director. There's also the fiscal year twenty wage scale that we just talked about. Oh, boy. We already used K.
We already used K.
I'm gonna change that. This would be L. I should have picked Z.
I know, right, gone the other way.
So, again, this is a very similar conversation that we just had. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the job description for the new non-union position of human resources director. The classification of grade L with an annual salary of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars effective July first, two thousand nineteen.
What's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
All right, let's discuss. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I just wanted to ask, this might be one time, the HR coordinator position, do you want to take that? Would we ever go back to that again? You know, sometimes when we hire, start with an administrative assistant from a clerk, we keep the clerk there in case that person left the position. They wouldn't, the new person wouldn't automatically start in it as an admin? Do we think, you know, when Clarinda retires, we start all over again with coordinator, or?
I don't want to think that far down, down the road.
I would just like to take positions off.
Do you want to take the position off?
I think that if we have a human resource director, we would probably stay with a director.
What does that require, a vote?
Just to vote to remove the HR coordinator off the wage scale.
All right. I'm okay with having that. I'll make that motion.
I second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make it go away. Agenda item number fifteen, review and vote on the job description and classification of the human resources administrative assistant position effective July first, two thousand nineteen. So we have a new position, the HR administrative assistant position, discussed at the budget meeting held with the finance committee on March fifth. So we have another red line job description. This would be included on the wage scale with a position of level one. And I will make a motion to approve the job description for the new non-union position of the human resources administrative assistant with a classification of level one effective July first, two thousand nineteen. I made the motion.
I second the motion.
All right, discussion. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
The purpose behind this is to relieve Clarinda of some hours, kind of help her out. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So out of the job description, the question would be, is what does Clarinda do in her job task that's being sent over to this? Because part of this is to take the payroll and benefits that's currently being done in another department, and they move with this. I want to make sure that we relieve, relieve the burden of time from Clarinda. That's the whole purpose behind this.
Right, I mean, the point, a lot of the point behind it is to make sure that Clarinda's doing the job that she is qualified to do, which is less administrative than what she has been doing in the past. So she has been working the position essentially at one and a half times to try to cover all of the administrative responsibilities associated with the entirety of running the human resources department. In addition to that, there's been a little bit of a change, I think, in terms of some of the duties and responsibilities that that department has been taking over for some of the other departments. They have recently taken over hiring all the park personnel, that happened, all the seasonal workers, you know, they're doing a lot of work with the fire department. They're doing, you know, a lot more items that are kind of coming through that whole department. So whereas we kind of moved this position originally, I guess we've kind of been shifting gradually this department from the treasurer-collector's office over to more so along the lines of the office of the board of selectmen, I would say, and the town administrator.
I would say more from the Board of Selectmen, because the work, all the workers come injured on duty. We haven't, I haven't even given that to Clarinda yet, and that's.
Right.
A lot of work, too.
Yeah, and so I think as we kind of plan for the future and having the new town administrator in trying to streamline what's happening in this department, that's the goal, is to create this position so that Clarinda has somebody that reports directly to her who's able to handle the duties that she then therefore can pass down.
Right, I want to make sure that we're, the purpose is to relieve Clarinda of certain duties. I want to make sure the job description does that.
Yep.
So, the first part of it would be is, what does she do specifically that this person is picking up? Not what she's carrying from another department.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to read through the red line.
I did.
Then, those are the items really.
No, well, if, if you've read it and you're, my, my purpose is to help Clarinda, not to transfer someone from another department that's already doing certain functions. So, if, if you think this accomplishes it, that's fine. I have some questions on some of the red lines. If, page 1.
Yep.
Update employees' vacation, the overtime prior to the fiscal year end.
Can I just ask which job description you're on? You're on the administrative assistant, right?
Yeah, yeah, no.
You were good with the director.
Clarinda's, I'm okay with Clarinda's. I want to make sure that this person is relieving Clarinda.
Yep.
Of functions.
Yep.
So, on the administrative, whatever, the Human Resource Administrative Assistant, page 1, the overtime prior to fiscal year end, well, that can be one day before the fiscal year end. And we've had problems before when people don't know their vacation and sick time and they, they susceptible to losing it. Isn't it right on their payroll stub?
No, it's not up to date, but Clarinda is the one that inputs what days, all those slips from every single employee has to go to Clarinda, whether it's two hours of sick time.
Yeah, I get that, but on your payroll stub, does it tell you what unused sick time you have and stuff like that?
They don't, not the sick time, maybe vacation days.
Well, we've had problems with this. Prior to the fiscal year end, you need to say, you know, someone could say, well, I want to take my vacation time. So, you should figure out how to give it to them ahead of time.
Clarinda does. It's a separate, she sends letters to every department head.
I'm reading this one. I'm reading this one. Doesn't say when you, how, nevermind.
Yeah.
And she does.
The work, the working conditions, the other, last one is the, page 4, the overtime, time and a half. So, you should add that the overtime must be pre-approved if it isn't, there's someone already. That's it. Done.
What, what does he talk about now in overtime?
What did you say on page 4?
The, the overtime, page.
The overtime.
Page 4. Second from the end. Talk about, as will be paid, time and a half.
Yes, it's a.
It needs to be approved prior to working, like we're soon.
Well, that's stand, standard language of what type of position it is. Absolutely, Clarinda would have to approve it.
Okay.
The Eek?
Yeah, the week.
Yeah.
I like that term better. We're going to change it to a work eek.
Eek. That's it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Agenda item number 16, request for the renewal of the temporary mobile home permit for 111 Main Street. If approved, the permit would expire October 22nd, 2019. This is the trailer that's on site due to fire on Main Street. They are looking to extend this for another six months.
Do you touch a motion?
I entertain a motion to extend the permit to expire October 22nd, 2019. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes. Just one. So, I will entertain a motion, actually, I will make the motion to approve the Selectmen meeting minutes on March 5th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Have a stand. And new business? Do we have any new business?
Yes, there is. I wanted to talk to you afterwards about it, Metzey, but just that I did this afternoon, Mr. Crosley came in with two more withdrawals from Chapter 61A on Crooked Lane. So, I wanted to talk to you afterwards about putting that on the next meeting.
All right, we will talk about that. Old business, so updates on the town hall redesign?
The next office for the Treasurer Collector, Tom Robinson, is coming in this weekend to move the door, build the wall. We're not quite sure if it'll take him two weekends, and then the tile guy is scheduled immediately after, and the painter.
All right.
And all of the new file cabinets and counters are on order.
Great, so Community Compact Grant.
No update on that.
No update there. New police station, there's a meeting tomorrow, and Route 79. So, we have a warrant article drafted by Town Council for the annual town meeting related to the easements, the taking of land. So, this will be coming forward to us on warrant review and the annual.
Yes, and we will, I didn't put the email from Town Council regarding the dollar amount. The dollar amount will have to be decided before town meeting.
Okay. All right, I am just looking for.
The refile?
Oh, no, the, the dates, just to see, when, when's the walkthrough to 24th? Wednesday, April 24th. So, that's the site walk on Route 79. We hope we don't get hit by a car.
Rain, did you, did you figure out? Can we get the gadra van?
Kelly said it's a little difficult during the day because they utilize it, so I'm going to kind of look at what we have for some other options.
Going to use the accessories van, accessories, new car.
We can use my Tahoe that holds.
Are we going to drive it?
I think there's going to be a lot of people.
Can I ask, are we driving it like 20 feet, stopping at the pole?
No, no, they, they wanted to, they actually wanted to walk it.
I was going to say.
They wanted to walk it for 3 and 1/2 miles.
I don't have a problem with that.
I think you stop and you.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Get your vehicle after you walk so far, then you move up.
Right, right.
It'll be fun.
So, certainly it's important that.
Guess I'll be walking the poles myself.
Nate, obviously, is part of that, and obviously Franklin's the key person on that, but I certainly would encourage everyone to go to that.
All right. Excellent. Any other business? No. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session.
Oh, can I do one of them? I'm sorry. Under the refile, the open space committee.
Yep.
They gave us a rather lengthy letter on Island Terrace. I'd encourage them to, to go work with the bank and come up with numbers if they want to keep it as open space. Let them come up with the numbers and figures and present it to us. I would encourage them to do that if they, so do, we always end up being the bad guys and going, yeah, okay, $1 million an acre, that's kind of expensive. I have 50 acres of mine, I wouldn't mind $50 million.
You know what you should do, John? Maybe you should put some telephone poles on it.
Yeah.
Maybe that'll cost $1 million.
I know, I made a mistake of burying mine. That was the mistake I did. The, so, I would certainly encourage them to, to do that. Everyone seems to be vocal, let's keep it open space, let's keep it open space. So, I'd say, come up with a price, demolish the building, demolish all the buildings and come up with a price, and present it to the town.
All right.
See if they like it.
Well, that being said, I'm going to make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Master General Act 30A, Section 21A 3, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of the City of New Bedford versus First Development Company, Inc., et al., Civil Action Number 1983 CV 00243 in Cornaglia versus First Colony Development Company, Inc., et al., Civil Action Number 1983 CV 00244. Holding the meeting in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation position, and the Chair so declares, and pursuant to Master General Act 30A, Section 21A 1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and pursuant to Master General Act 30A, Section 21A 4, to discuss the deployment of, or strategy regarding security, personnel, or devices, and not return to open session.
So moved.
I made that motion.
Oh, you made that motion? Okay.
Like, just switch it up.
So, you're going to second that?
Please, a second.
Okay, Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Davian?
Aye.
Paul?
Oh, who?